Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Monday evening, October 6th, 2025. It is about 7:05 PM, and this is a regular meeting of the Gorham Planning Board. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to our republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please silence your cellphones? Thank you. Mr. Yakaloff, would you please call your role?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Ms. Nichols. Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Present.
Mr. Delaney.
Here.
Mr. Crisifulli.
Here.
Thank you. Well, ladies and gentlemen, just tell me this evening, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes, August 4th, 2025, Planning Board Meeting, and September 8th, 2025, Planning Board Meeting. Ms. Nichols is not available. She did send me a note saying she reviewed them, and she did not find any errors. We typically take each meeting date separately. Does anyone have any comments, questions, suggestions, edits on the August 4th minutes, please? Anyone? Is there a motion, please?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Is there a second, please?
No second.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Without any other changes, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
And I abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
You abstained. I'm sorry. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the September 8th minutes, please, if there are any edits, changes, questions, comments. I'll throw my two cents in, and, I'm sorry? I apologize. Yes, Mr. Frank, please.
On page five, I, about the middle of this McCullen Road, I'm not familiar with that road. Is that a real road, or is it a misspelling? Just a question.
On page five, could you zoom in, please, whereabouts?
About halfway down, on the left side, McCullen Road. I'm not, I'm not aware of that road. Not that I know every road, but...
Yeah.
I believe it should say McClellan.
Oh, I see. It's my Boston English on that artificial intelligence translator. It should be McClellan. Thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
My, I think, I think, our rules are that meetings end at 10 o'clock unless there's a consensus of the board to continue. We did continue. We had a few last-minute things. I'm wondering, and I'll take majority here, should we say in here that there was a vote by consensus to continue the meeting? That's why we didn't adjourn until 10:15. You don't think, you think it's a way...
I think that reflects what happened, so...
Thank you, Colonel.
I would be in favor.
I would, I think it would be just before item seven, if my memory serves. We were kind of silly at that point, but, so please, above item seven, vote by consensus to continue the meeting past 10:00 PM. Thank you. So we had two edits. Are there any other edits on those minutes, please? All righty, do we have a motion, please? Mr. Frank? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Delaney. We had two edits. Everyone's all set with them? All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
And Dave Walsh's thing?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. All righty, moving right along, please. Our reports, Chair report. I don't, I don't have anything constructive to add this evening. We did have a workshop prior to this on E-code overview. It's a whole new electronic system for all the codes. I'll leave it at that. It's on the website. Anyone else want to add to that? We've had our fill for this evening. Mr. Pori is happy about it. Thank you. That's all I have. Committee reports, ordinance review, Mr. Walsh?
The ordinance committee has not met since the last time we had a meeting.
Thank you. Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee, Mr. Frank?
We also have not met.
Thank you very much. Administrative view, I look to the Planning Department.
We have had no items for administrative review.
Should be a light November, maybe?
We'll see.
Which happens in the next two weeks. All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing portion of our meeting this evening. Item number one, contract zone rescindments, a request to rescind contract zones on several parcels in the South Gorham Commercial Corridor District per request of the landowners. This includes map three, lot 22-2, map three, lot 22-403, and map three, lot 22-502 to 507 inclusive, map four, lot 6 to 8, map four, lot 9, and map six, lot 31, map six, lot 28, map six, lot 30, map six, lot 36, map six, lot 41-3, and map six, lot 19-1. I'm out of breath. Would someone from planning like to kick this off, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So, this item represents an opportunity for several of the landowners in South Gorham to rescind contract zones on their parcels. So the background here is the council's received requests for rescindment of several contract zones in this area, and so we, staff discussed with the council whether it might make sense to offer collective rescindment in order to save some staff time and also landowner resources. And one of the reasons why they might want to consider doing this is that these contract zones were put into place from 2012 to 2014, and at the time they were put into place, that area was largely residential in nature, and the land uses allowed reflected that. And since then, the underlying zoning has changed from residential to South Gorham Commercial Corridor, which allows for a greater, much greater range of commercial uses, and as such, it's made the contract zones redundant, and in some cases actually counterproductive, where the underlying zoning might allow the landowner to do more than the contract zone does. So, we have put this out to all of the landowners that had contract zones in South Gorham, and we heard back from six of them, and we have, that's why there's a list of number of map and lots. Some of the landowners have multiple lots, so it's not all of them. We've also put it out to the other landowners that didn't respond by the deadline that we set to be on this meeting, so there may be a second wave that comes through. But with those six, we've allowed them to share the application fee, and that comes out to $158 per applicant, which is significantly lower than the $950. So it allows for them to save a bit of money and time in working through the process. And with that, turn it back over to you, and I think I may have some more to add to, and can you answer any questions you may have?
No, I think Damon summarizes it quite well. So I think at the time, the council did not want to move forward with the South Gorham Corridor Commercial Zone, so they opted in to do these contract zones. Once that underlying zone was adopted by a council, those contract zones are no longer needed, and we're just giving an opportunity for them to remove them now.
Thank you. My understanding is that there may be a second wave...
Correct.
...when other abuders find out, oh, I didn't know about this, et cetera, et cetera, which is perfectly, perfectly legal. Thank you. Anyone from the Planning Board?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If there was anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this item, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. I see no one rising. Ladies and gentlemen, if there was anyone that would like to speak against this item, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Again, I see no one rising. Ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to speak about this project or this group item, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Again, I see absolutely no one rising.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Members of the board?
Looks like a good project, good, good use of staff time to get out there and talk to all the other homeowners. That was good.
Straightforward as it can be.
Yep.
The map, is all of them, or only the ones this evening that were...
The map reflects the ones that are surrounded by the magenta...
Yes.
...that are under proposal to be rescinded, and the ones that are brown with the crosshatch are the contract zones that the landowner either didn't get back to us, or they told us they were going to wait, or maybe not.
Sure, sure, sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
For the most part, just so you know, they mostly didn't respond, so we're going to try a second time to reach out to them.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. If there's not much here, then on page four, please, we have a couple of motions, if someone would like to... Yes, Colonel, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to send the proposed contract zone rescissions to the next available town council meeting for a public hearing with a recommendation for rescission.
Thank you, Colonel. Is there a second, please?
Second, Dave Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other discussion on this? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Let's see, moving right along, please. Item two, Land Use and Development Code Amendment, Accessory Dwelling Units on Private Ways, a request to amend Land Use and Development Code, Chapter Two, Section 2-4(c), accessory apartments, to exempt accessory apartments from the requirement of being considered a dwelling unit being served by a private way. Would someone from planning, I guess it's only going to be you tonight.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. And backup from Mr. Pori, of course. So this item is a proposal from the council to consider a change to the way that accessory dwelling units are counted against the capacity of a private way. The way it works right now is there's three private way standards in town, two to six lots, gravel private ways, seven to 10-lot paved private way, and 11 to 25-lot paved private way. And the way it works right now is if, let's say, there was subdivision with eight lots and had a seven to 10-lot paved private way, two of them build accessory dwelling units, that's maxed out the capacity of the private way. So under this proposal, under consideration, if accessory dwelling units were not counted, then everybody on the subdivision could build an accessory dwelling unit. It wouldn't max out at two, in that example. So that's what's under consideration this evening. I think one of the reasons to consider it may be to allow for some of those homeowners to build accessory dwelling units without having the last one in problem, so to speak.
Sure, sure. First come, first served. Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Pori, anything?
No, I think Damon touched on it quite well about accessory dwelling units. He just, so accessory dwelling units are exempt under the space standards under the Land Use and Development Code. They weren't exempt under the provisions for private ways, so that's why we're just kind of clarifying that. The one thing I will tell the Planning Board is, we are getting a lot of pressure from the state of Maine regarding accessory dwelling units. In the past, accessory dwelling units are just what they were. You had to be the primary residence of the house to have an accessory dwelling unit. State legislation's coming down, that is not the fact. So every lot in the town of Gorham, as well as statewide, you can have a house, and you can have an ADU, and you don't have to live in either one now. That's the new state law coming down. So every lot in Gorham is a two-unit, can have two units that you would be able to rent.
That law's been passed?
Correct. And they're in rulemaking right now, but it will be coming down, and we're going to have to adopt it as part of the Land Use Code at some point. So people can buy up houses, put an ADU on a lot, and now they have two units to rent, and they don't have to live in the lot or the ADU, which was the rules in the past.
Thank you. I think, thank you.
I just, some bad news is up front is sometimes better, but I'd just let you guys know that it's coming.
Colonel, please.
So I know this is a public hearing, so if you want to wait, I'm happy to...
If you want to chit chat beforehand, maybe it'll bribe something from somebody...
So the question that I have, a couple of questions. What's the, so is the genesis of this request to get ahead of this legislation, or is there some specific issue that's going on right now at a property that someone is, you know...
So I think the council has heard from, we've had developments that have developed to that, like Damon says, you have the 10-lot private way standard, you have eight lots in the subdivision that are served by that private way, two have accessory dwelling units, the other ones can't. So out of, I think fairness, the council says, well, if it's a law on a private way, you should have a house or an ADU. So I think that's what they're trying to do.
Right, but you're, so you're, part of what you have just explained is making me less likely to recommend approval for this, because according to your own comments, the town has expanded the number of dwelling units that are allowed to be served by private ways already, and now we're potentially doubling the amount of livable units on a private way. If everyone is allowed to have an ADU without upgrading the road, we've now doubled the livable units on that private way, and we've done no upgrades to the road. So to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense, so without knowing the, and I'd rather not have a bunch of people move, buy up homes and put ADUs on them and not live in them. I mean, that doesn't, that's not an argument to me to recommend approval. So that's kind of where I'm at with this, and I'm happy to listen to other comments.
If I, if I, oh, I'm sorry, Russell, go ahead.
With respect to private way, does the town have responsibility to maintain a private way? No, I didn't think so. So to your point about, you know, if we have more dwelling units, then...
No, but the size of the road, the standards it was built to, it was built to handle a certain amount of traffic. That's why the standards exist. If you're doubling the amount of traffic on that road, and you're not increasing the standards that it's built to, like, why do we even have standards if they don't mean anything?
But that's it, so...
But if it's a private way, why should we care?
Yeah.
Why do we have, why do we have standards at all, though?
Right. Because some roads are town roads.
No, for private ways, we have standards for private ways.
Yeah, so it's a time, you know, there's no standing in front of this, it's happening. So is it time to, or, as we look at this process, to go back and reexamine the private way standards? It may need to be upgraded, because if you have an eight, would you say a seven to 11, I can't figure, you know, now can be a 14 to 22, so do we need to upgrade the standards for the private ways?
I think as part of the early discussion on with the council regarding this item, there has been discussions about the private way standards, and where do they, where do they fall with, if you're now doubling the number of dwelling units. Were you part of that discussion? Was it Terry? I think it was Terry Dearing, the Public Works Director, identified some concerns with it. I mean, my recommendation that the Planning Board could absolutely send this to one of your committees, and just let's look at the private way standards, and then get some comfort level of what do you think this is or not. So I think you can do a little bit, because again, you guys are the ones who are looking at private ways and the standards, and you're going to have to do these reviews. So taking a month to look at the private way standards, and then saying, hey, maybe seven to 10, or, yeah, eight to 10 paved private way standards is okay, but we have concerns regarding this other standard. So just looking at them, and then we can have Chuck and Terry at that workshop, and then talk to you about, do they have any concerns with traffic? Because there's more things than just width, and then in the structure of the road, like speeds, and then vertical curves, and all these other things. I mean, are they still okay for the volume we're talking about?
Are we okay with that, at that point right now? Because we are in a public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Go for it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if there was anyone that would like to speak in favor of this item, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. I see no one rising, ladies and gentlemen. If there was anyone that would like to speak against this item, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Again, I see no one rising, and ladies and gentlemen, if there was anyone that is neutral, that wants to just talk about this item, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, I see no one rising.
Yeah, one person.
I'm sorry? Thank you, Colonel.
My name is Leland Buzzell, and I live at 9 Amy's Way in Gorham, and it is a private way, and it's in South Gorham. Question being that if they're changing that requirement, as I understand the state regulation, that any lot in the town of Gorham in which you can build a single-family residence has to allow an accessory, an accessory dwelling unit. Is that not correct?
Look into that.
So legal opinion has identified that regarding the space standards, we cannot have restrictions regarding ADUs, but the state law does allow us to have restrictions on access in private ways, so we are allowed to have restrictions that limit the number of dwelling units on private ways, whether it's an accessory dwelling unit or a single-family house.
Even though it's a lot?
Even though it's a lot, we can still restrict access.
Because of it being a private way, or...
Correct, and access. The state law does not identify anything regarding safe access and street frontage to a lot.
Okay, because I was under the impression that the state law says that any lot is allowed an accessory dwelling unit, irregardless of where it's located.
Again, that's regarding space standards, not regarding access and street frontage.
Well, I believe, aren't those compatible? So the state regulation doesn't, is not being counted, then?
No, so again, the state law allows us to identify appropriate access to a lot, and then the number of dwelling units that will be served on that lot.
So you're saying the state requirement of allowing an accessory dwelling unit on any residential lot in the town is not accurate?
I'm saying that the state law says accessory dwelling units are exempt from the...
Are allowed on every lot.
Are exempt from the space standards for any lot that's allowed single families regarding space standards, so minimum lot size, street frontage, but it does not exempt access. So the town can identify appropriate access to a lot and the number of dwelling units. State law does not supersede that and give an exemption. Now, the state in the future could say, hey, towns, you don't have the right to limit access for ADUs. They have not done that to date.
So that law, in essence, is not accurate, is what you're saying?
It is accurate for space standards, but it is not accurate regarding all standards.
Okay, so you're saying the state standard, which was publicized in, you know, and has been a number of different ways, says that any lot in the state of Maine in which you can build a residence, you have a right for, to have an accessory dwelling unit, period. It doesn't, and I realize each community gets to do regulations of what's there and how they're built, size-wise, and et cetera, but just the fact that, you know, my concern is, if you can't keep that, how does your lot, you know, maintain its utility? You're being disadvantaged.
I think we could have this conversation, feel free to set up an appointment at my office, and we can walk you through the difference.
No, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Please follow up with Mr. Pori. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is closed. I go back to the Planning Board, please. I think Mr. Pori had a strong recommendation, perhaps that goes to our ordinance committee for a workshop.
Sure.
But I'll entertain a motion on page three of our...
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
I'd move to send the proposed amendment to Chapter 300, Part 2, General Standards of Performance, Section 2.38, Standards for Private Ways, to the Ordinance Committee for Workshop Review and Recommendations. And I would appreciate the input at that meeting from Chuck, our town engineer, and if Terry has some opinions on it, I'd like to hear from him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Delaney. So parts of it appear to be as clear as mud.
Yeah.
And we will follow up. Hopefully, we can coerce Mr. Norton and Mr. Dearing and attend that meeting. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, going on to item five, I'm sorry, Section 5, Discussions. Item three, item three, a discussion. Sketch plan review, Southern Main Heat Pumps, mixed-use development. A request to review a plan for the development of a mixed-use commercial and residential building and associated infrastructure on a 20,000-square-foot parcel on Main Street at Moja Corner. Zone Moja Corner, mixed-use, map 32, lot 24. The applicant is represented by Andy Morrow, PE, with BH2M. Would someone from the Planning Department like to kick this off, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So this is a proposal for mixed-use development on this 20,000-square-foot lot. As you may recall, the Planning Board recently revised the space standards in this zone for mixed-use developments to allow them on 20,000-square-foot lots, provided that there is public water and sewer. So what they're looking to do is have a commercial unit on the first floor and residential on the second floor, with associated parking, other infrastructure, access off of Main Street. And they are looking to extend the water and sewer through an easement, so that's something we'd suggest the board inquire with the applicant about the status of the public sewer connection, because it is required to build at the density that they're looking to build at. Other considerations, the site distances on the access, access management is important along Main Street, so that's something we, in addition, we'd suggest that the board look to more information from the applicant for. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Yakaloff. Good evening, Mr. Morrow.
Good evening, Andy Morrow, civil engineer with BH2M, here representing Sam Strump of Southern Main Heat Pumps. Damon did a good job kind of kicking that off. .57 acre parcel on Main Street. I think the board is pretty familiar with this lot. It's out in front of the Vista Park subdivision, just next to the main optometry building. Applicant is looking to relocate their business to Gorham, Southern Main Heat Pumps, very growing and active business, so I think that's a good thing. Looking to build a 28-by-100-foot building. First floor will be commercial space for the Southern Main Heat Pumps business. Second floor will be a three-bedroom residential apartment. As Damon touched on, we're going to bring public water, gas, and underground electric from Main Street to serve the lot. Public sewer will be brought through an easement down the back of the parcel from Vista Drive. We're going to reuse the existing site entrance onto Main Street, which is on the western side of the parcel, where the site distance onto Main Street is significantly better. As shown on the plan, I have 12 parking spaces and one ADA parking space. We did have a meeting with department heads last week. Some of the items we talked about were site distance. Our office will locate the site, survey, locate the site distance, and meet Terry Dearing on-site to review that and confirm that that's adequate. We had a conversation with code enforcement. This lot received a zoning board of appeal. had a conversation with code enforcement. This lot received a zoning board of appeal waiver, I guess, if you will, back in 2017 for a front setback requirement. The lot that received that waiver from the zoning board of appeals was, since that time, has been split. So this lot that we're talking about this evening, it's been determined by the town attorney that the waiver does not apply to this lot. It would apply to the other lot where the structure existed. Long story short, we need to meet the front setback requirements. I was holding 29-ish feet. Actually, I had the building about 35 feet back from the right-of-way. We're going to have to move that building about 15 feet away from Main Street, which will most likely eliminate the parking that we show behind the building. So that parking back there will most likely be eliminated. So the next, next plan we bring before you, I'll move that building up and, and meet that front setback. Uh, some of the items we talked about with the town was a internal sidewalk. Uh, the department heads were hoping that we could do an internal sidewalk that would connect the front of the building or where the ADA's parking space is in front of the building to Main Street. The applicant has agreed to install that. Any future plans, we'll show that. Uh, we also discussed off-site sidewalks. There's no real off-site sidewalk anywhere close to this. The closest one is about 3,100 feet. Uh, that is up on, at, at the intersection where Gateway Commons starts. Um, the applicant would prefer to pay the in-lu fee for the sidewalk rather than construct sidewalk 3,100 feet for this project. So we would ask the board to consider allowing them to pay the fee for that service. As the board knows, sketch plan is, in my opinion, the most important step of a project. It's a great opportunity for us to introduce the project to you guys, but really good opportunity for you guys to give us guidance before we get into the design. So we welcome any comment or criticism or anything you guys have to give us some direction this evening. Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll throw it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Members of the board. Mr. Walsh, please.
Yes, Andy, thank you for the presentation. Just, you know, I don't have many questions, but, and first, just a first glance at your, um, the site plan, I understand you're saying you're going to move the building back, which will eliminate a couple of the parking spaces on, on the back line. But when I look at the, the way you have it grayed out, it's an awful lot of pavement for the size building on that site. Is that all necessary?
It is. So, um, I don't know, I can't remember if, I think I submitted a building plan. But if you look at the building plan, there's overhead garage doors on that whole front side. So they want to be able to drive up and drive their vehicles into the building. So having that access and, and pavement up to the building is, is pretty critical.
And it has to be, you need the depth of it as well to the back? The, I guess that would be the west, the west side?
Yeah, the, the hard part about this side is we're really tied to that entrance, because the, the further we get the entrance to the west, and, and the Chapman property to the west, the better the site distance. So we'd really like to hold that existing entrance. Could we potentially move some of that pavement down? I can certainly look into that and see if that's, if that's a viable option, sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Please, Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question really, really for Damon. On our notes, on page 2, um, under the comprehensive plan, you say that the plan recommends changing the zoning to Moser Corner Mixed Use. And then in the next paragraph or whatever, it says the zoning is currently Moser Corner Mixed Use. What's going on?
Correct. Yeah, the Moser Corner Mixed Use Zone was adopted maybe five years ago, Tom, about. So that's, that part of the 2016 comprehensive plan has been implemented.
Okay, so the changing, the recommendation to change the zoning is not, it's already been done?
Yes, past tense.
I can gross it out.
Right, you can check that box. It's been done.
To, to the planning department, one of the things on page 2, we're talking about three different materials on the facade. When, when does that drawing have to reflect that? Because this, this, this elevation view does not.
That would be something in site plan?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think if the planning board had inclination to go from 2 to 3, let the applicant know, like, right? Is that what you're asking? Like, from going from 2 to 3?
Well, the performance standards require 3.
Yeah.
And, and we've seen other projects come through that have 3.
Right.
We've, we've discussed that. But on this particular one, I simply see, let's call it clapboards.
Okay.
But I, I don't know if our discussion this evening is, is worrying about that.
I think letting the applicant know that they've got to put two, two different type materials or three different type of materials, that was, they know what to do when they come back.
Can I, can I mention this drawing?
Please.
Itself, please, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Please, no, no, don't, no disrespect. The upper floor plan, do you have a copy of it handy?
Yeah.
So we got the three-bedroom apartment, apparently. I'm looking on sheet 2 of 3.
Yep.
Three-bedroom apartment, and it appears that we have a doorway, a 3-foot door coming into unfinished area. But it simply says trusses. So I, I don't know, i- is it going to be a subfloor there? And maybe I'm outside of my boundaries of what I should be discussing here, but there's a 3-foot door. To what?
Right. I can, I can ask the architect and, and find out what, uh...
I mean, it's great detail. You know, this, I'm, I'm pleased with this. I'm, you know, I went through this thing.
Oh, yeah?
And I'm thinking, okay, you open up the 3-foot door, and what do you, you go down the, you know, laundry chute.
We don't want that.
Just, just, just curious.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you pointing it out, and I will, I will make sure to address it.
Well, I, I think to answer your question, Mr. Chair, the, the fact that there's a stairway going down would strongly suggest that there's a floor there.
Well, that's the stair coming up there. It could be very subfloor. I, I'm just curious. Because alls I see is the word trusses, 24 inches on center. That, that's all. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. Mr. Burrows would be chastising me right now. Um, maybe a north arrow orientation on a plan view, because I understand you're talking about moving the entire structure about 15 feet to the east? Or north, I'm sorry, to the north.
15 feet to the north.
North, sure, sure. Taking out a few of those parking spots, okay.
Correct.
Sure.
And I don't know, the applicant may consider widening the building and shortening the building, so maybe we keep that parking in the rear. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how that's all going to play out. But we're going to have to meet the front setback of 50 feet.
Yeah, the rendering is very nice. That's enough of me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other, anyone else? Any other members of the board? We did, we did receive an update. I, I commented that it was a little bit dark to see that drawing, so I think we all have a new revised plan view showing the lot lines. Thank you to Danielle for, for doing that.
Uh, that was, that was me, but, uh...
Oh, well, even, even more so. Thank you.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, so this is the 2022 Gorham imagery. If anybody at home is using our GIS on our website, um, the 2022 imagery is leaf-off, and it's the best way to look at things in general. So it's the box at the very bottom of the layered list, if you're looking for that. And if you have any questions about the GIS, you're welcome to call our office, and I'd be happy to talk to you more about it.
I'm going to look at page 5, if you don't mind for a minute, please. The planning department, um, fire department, no comments? Do I suspect the drawing didn't get through his, past his eyes? There's always an NFPA comment or two.
Yeah, I, I would assume when we get a submission, there'll be fire comments, but there will be standard comments regarding NFPA regarding the building.
Sprinklers.
Sprinklers, all that will be standard, standard language. I think, really, Main Street's got hydrants and stuff, so I don't think, at this time, the, the fire chief thought comments were warranted.
Well, I didn't want any surprises. I, I wouldn't want Mr. Morrow to think you got a free pass.
I appreciate you keeping me in line. One, one item I did want to kind of bounce off the board, I just thought of as I'm standing here. So, um, the Vista Park subdivision that was approved behind this lot about 15 years ago now, required a 15-foot landscape easement on the back of this lot for future landscaping. That will be part of the Vista Park subdivision, if that ever gets built. Um, I have proposed my parking lot to go into that easement. If you look on the sketch plan I gave you, I've got my parking lot going about halfway through that easement. It's not impacting the landscaping that needs to happen as part of that project, but I just wanted to make sure the board thought that was acceptable. Um, I needed that room to be able to, to get the parking onto my site. So I've gone into that easement. Now, keep in mind, that landscaping was required back 15 years ago when this was a residential lot and that was a commercially zoned lot. So the buffer was required to provide screening between a commercial use and a residential use. Now, these are both going to be commercial uses. So whether that buffer even ever gets built, or, I, I'm not sure for that project, you know, whatever's going to happen with that project. But I just wanted to point it out that we have shown some, some work into that easement, and I wanted to make sure the board was okay with that.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, please.
Thank you. Andy, a couple of questions, more in the curiosity category.
Sure.
Where is Southern Main Heat Pumps located now?
Uh, right now, they are in Standish.
Standish?
Yep.
Ah, we're getting more Standish business. It's not, and roughly how many employees?
Uh, I believe they have about 15.
15?
Yep.
And how many vehicles?
Uh, that I don't know. I can, I can ask them that question and include that information in our application.
No, because I...
I'll, I'll include the total number of employees and total number of vehicles.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just looking at the garage doors. I see 3. I'm wondering if maybe one of them is dedicated to the occupants of the rental apartment?
It is not.
It is not?
Those will all be for the business.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Members of the board? Comments, suggestions?
All good.
Does the, I'm sorry, does the town staff, any comment on the, on the buffer requirements and the easement?
Uh, no. So there will be buffer requirements towards the front of the lot. The one thing you...
I'm talking about the ones he's talking about.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So there will be buffering along the street. The other thing that Andy may want to consider, as you guys are looking at the orientation, if, if you spin that building, and you can then use the building as a buffer to your parking in the back. So just a thought you guys can consider when you guys are looking at laying it out, what's the best, best use of where that building can go, because you could probably tuck it right to that 50, that, that 50-foot setback, and then run it parallel to the road. You may be able to get a little bit more pavement and access around there. So, and then that would use the buffer. But regarding, I, I was on the review committee, and Andy's right, that was, at the time, residential and a more a commercial use behind it. There was a lot of discussion about appropriate buffering. So if the lot in front of it has buffering, I think the board can be okay with removing that, that, that buffer.
Both commercial use.
They're both commercial use, or mixed use, so.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, please, Tom.
Uh, so just for a planning board's consideration, uh, planning board would, would support identifying that this would be a in-lu situation for off-site sidewalks, just because in order to have a sidewalk connect to Moser Corner, which will be the closest sidewalk, there's going to be substantial pedestrian controls needed at the light. And before that happens, it's going to be part of a bigger package. So if the developer contributes some funds, it'll be town funds, and then most likely, uh, Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation Funds or GPCOG funds to help us get a sidewalk system that works there. So it's, it's going to be substantial, and this developer doesn't, this small of a development doesn't warrant paying the whole thing, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All good.
Mr. Morrow, I think we're good.
Great. Appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You as well. A little earlier than last month.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, item 4 on the discussion, part of the agenda, discussion, sketch plan review, Robey Street subdivision and site plan, Phases 1M-4. A request to review a plan for development of Phases 1M-4 of a proposed development on 131 plus or minus acres of land behind Village Elementary School. Zone contract zone and urban residential and urban residential expansion. MAP 25, Lot 8, MAP 24, Lot 20, MAP 27, Lot 20, and MAP 24, Lot 19. The applicant is represented by Dan Riley, PE of Sibago Techniques.
Uh, yes, so, um...
Thank you.
The project before you is a part of a large multi-phase project. So as you may recall, uh, there's a contract zone that was reviewed by the planning board, and then that was approved by the town council in December of 2024. Um, the contract zone modifies the underlying zoning several ways, and a copy of that is included as an attachment to the memo. Um, so, um, the project phasing is, uh, they have four phases, uh, and each phase, uh, I believe all, one of the phases has a multifamily and a single-family component. They're currently building out the first phase, single-family lots. So that is under construction currently. That also involved, uh, construction of several new roads connecting through from White Birch Lane over to Robey Street and then down to Bramblewood. Um, and there's 44 single-family lots currently under construction there. Uh, so what they're before you with, uh, this evening is the sketch plan, uh, to build out the, uh, next phases of construction, uh, Phase 1M through 4. Um, they're looking to get feedback from the board, uh, with some potential changes to, uh, the plans from what was included in the concept plan. Um, among them is an additional 120 units in the multifamily phase, and that's something, um, we have asked the developer to provide as a comparison. And, uh, and in addition to that, any other, uh, changes that they'd, uh, propose from the original concept plan, so that, uh, that can be clear, uh, to the board and the public watching and to staff. Um, and then whether those changes require, um, any amendment to the concept plan, contract zone would then have to be considered. Um, there's so, just to highlight some of the, um, details about the contract zone, so, and, and what's required here. Uh, now, they do have a, a significant amount of conservation land. Um, so what we'd look to is, uh, sort of for them to provide information about how that will be accessed, um, whether there'll be, uh, access to the trailhead throughout all phases of the project. Uh, they're working with Prusumskut Regional Land Trust on that. Whether there'll be public parking, that's something the Conservation Commission is very interested in, and will look for the applicant to provide information about that. Um, there's also requirement for active open space. So we'd look for them to provide additional information about how that's going to be provided and what form, um, through some pocket parks and, uh, other active open space type development. Um, and there are some additional, uh, questions and, uh, detailed requirements in the review memo. But with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, and happy to take questions from staff as, uh, after, from the developer.
Thank you, Mr. Yakaloff. Mr. Riley, good evening.
Hello. Okay, well, thank you. Uh, my name's Dan Riley. I'm an engineer with Sibago Techniques, and I'm here on behalf of KV Enterprises, uh, to talk about the sketch plan for Phases 1M through 4 of the Robey Street subdivision. Uh, Vinnie Maeda from the applicant is here, if there's any questions, um, that come up that, uh, the, the applicant owner, uh, needs to address. Um, as the staff memo outlined, um, this is a, um, sketch plan for the remaining phases of the Robey Street subdivision. It's 131 acres of property located off Robey Street, uh, White Birch Street, and Bramblewood Lane. Um, the property is in both the urban residential and urban residential expansion district and the development transfer overlay district. I don't see my, I have a presentation here. It looks like on the screen is just my desktop. Let me see if I can get this thing back up. There we go. Well, it doesn't look like it wants to present. Hold on a minute. So we'll try this. Well, we'll have to go this way. It doesn't seem to want to go to presentation mode here. Let me try that one more time. We'll go to full screen. How about that? How about that?
We'll go like you, you know.
Yeah, I just want to make, try and make it legible, so we'll go from here. So the the application, as the outline, as the staff memo outlines, the last time the planning board reviewed an overall concept plan of the project was in December of 2024 as part of the contract zone review for a contract zone that was accepted and recorded in December of 2024. Since that time, the Phase One residential component, 44 lots, was approved by the planning board in September 2024, and that's currently under construction. And the sketch plan today is for the remaining phases of the project, presenting a plan that's consistent with the uses of the contract zone, generally consistent with the layout and arrangement of those uses. And it presents a plan that makes a few changes. Most important, we think, of of all of those is that we've worked to reduce the overall development footprint of the project, really primarily for the purpose of reducing wetland impacts, which the new plan accomplishes. It's consolidated the number of buildings from 13 down to seven and changed the mix of units that were contemplated last year or the year before, moving away from larger two-bedroom or three-bedroom units to a development plan that it's entirely studio one-bedroom and no bigger than two-bedroom units as it's currently proposed. And so as we look at the the previous plan and the current plan with the potential units that may have been built under the original concept, the total number of bedrooms that we're proposing is about equal or a little bit reduced from what could have been developed under the original concept plan. The project does maintain with some modifications the open space that was reviewed by the planning board back in 2024, and make some additional revisions, as noted in the application, on the total number of single-family residential and the total number of residential units overall in the project. So the sketch that I have here on the board and up on the screen outlines the arrangement of the four phases. So to to remind or refresh the planning board, the darker unshaded areas along the top and left side of the plan, along the north and west side of the plan that's on the board here and next to you, excuse me, and on the screen, is the Phase One residential project that was approved in September and is currently under construction. That project, the water connection from Robie Street through the project, the running along the north side of the project is complete. The sewer infrastructure for that section of the road is complete, all the way to the proposed pump station. The pump station is under construction now, and the force main is installed. And the stormwater pond that's over on the right side of the plan in the shaded area that was developed for the first phase of the project for the residential and future multifamily phase there is also under construction and should be completed here in the next couple of weeks. So on the screen for the remaining phase of the development, in the upper right, shaded in red, is the Phase One multifamily phase that's similar in configuration to what was on the original concept plan from 2024. The blue area in the center represents the Phase Two single-family residential component of the project. The green lots in the bottom, say, third of the project is the Phase Three single-family residential component. The purple shaded area is the Phase Three multifamily component, and the yellow is in the, the yellow in the bottom right is the Phase Four project. When we talked, when we, as we discussed in the memo with the staff, flipping back to the previous slide here, the applicant's approach to review and approval and ultimate build out of the project is we wanted to come talk to you today about the sketch plan for all four phases of the project. We're anticipating coming back to you for initially for preliminary approval for the Phase One multifamily all the way through Phase Three. We're going to be seeking DEP approvals for that scope of the project and the traffic permitting for that scope of the project, leaving Phase Four, the final multifamily residential phase, for a future application. And that was really done to, based on the timing and the pace of development that's contemplated in the contract zone, the timeframe of DOT and approvals, those permits are only good for five years, and the build out of that last phase is more than five years out. And so for that reason, we'll be seeking preliminary approval for everything on the project except for the yellow in the bottom right, and then seeking final approval for for those as well, for everything except for the yellow on the bottom right. So the program is summarized on the screen and on the on the application here. The Phase One residential under construction is comprised of 44 lots. The Phase One multifamily here, 162 multifamily units in three buildings. The Phase Two residential phase, the blue, is currently proposed as 32 lots. The Phase Three residential in green, 25 single-family residential lots. The Phase Three multifamily, 74 units in a single building. And the Phase Four, 174 units as part of a future application. So the total number of units proposed is 511, with 101 of those being single-family lots and 410 in multifamily units. So flipping to sort of a layout, understanding the arrangement, the phasing, the next sketch talks or shows how, schematically, how some of the other components of the project are going to come together. The yellow being the single-family residential lots of the of the three phases that we discussed. Since the the board's last review and as part of the approvals of the first phase of the project that's under construction, a number of land transfers have occurred. All the land transfers along the axis along White Birch Road have occurred, as was required as part of the original approval, and 50 acres of conservation land on the, excuse me, on the east side of the property has been conveyed to the land trust. So that that those two components of the of the of the project have been completed. The arrangement of some of the other facilities, the stormwater management for the project is consistent with what the concept plan that you saw in 2024 included. There's a stormwater wet pond that's under construction here in this area that's designed to serve the Phase One residential development that's currently under construction. The Phase Two multifamily, that will be the next phase that goes into construction or served in a stormwater wet pond at that location, that's part of the approved plan that you that you approved last September. A second stormwater pond is going to be constructed in the center of the site. That's going to provide treatment for the Phase Two and Phase Three residential components and the Phase Three multifamily residential component. And then finally, as part of Phase Four, another stormwater facility specific to that phase will be constructed at the corner. The program that we submitted includes some calculations of what the open space requirements and proposed are. As part of the sketch plan, the open space includes passive open space and conservation land that's been conveyed and potential additional conveyances to the land trust, as well as more active or usable open space as required by the ordinance. We've retained in the sketch plan sort of a greenway that connects through the residential developments and alongside the multifamily that was part of the concept plan in 2024. And we've identified and will be showing as we come forward with the with the preliminary plans, some potential additional open space and some upland areas alongside the access road here where we had previously had.
Excuse me, Mr. Riley, I apologize. Is there any chance you can use your mouse to identify on the drawing you have in front of you? Because that drawing is down below.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, it's hard to read on the screen, so I was trying to point to the large picture. So the stormwater facilities we discussed, the Phase One stormwater construction that serves the first phase of the single-family residential and the first phase of the multifamily residential is under construction in this corner, this area of the site here, in the sort of the northeast corner of the site. That area is under construction and serves this portion of the project site. A second stormwater pond, a wet pond, is going to be constructed here at the center of the site, primarily to provide runoff for the Phase Two single-family residential component. A portion of the Phase Three residential and the Phase Three multifamily will be served by a stormwater facility at that location. And then Phase Four, when we come back for preliminary and final permitting of that, has its own stormwater facility that's going to be incorporated into the sort of the southwest corner of that site. The open space I was discussing is part of the previous concept plans and the review for the subdivision. The first phase of the subdivision, an open space corridor with with some amenities along a walking path, transects through the project site kind of from from north to south, extending through the first, second, and third phase of the residential with connections to the access road and some of the common open space areas that are in the center of the lot. There are some additional opportunities that have been opened up since we reconfigured and consolidated the buildings into fewer buildings, specifically at this location here, at the, sort of at the junction where the Phase Four multifamily is going to be located. There are some opportunities for some upland areas at that site that had previously been considered for a small building and parking lot that's been removed and consolidated into the other buildings to avoid some wetland impacts there is an opportunity for some open space that we're expecting to show when we come back for preliminary. And then as part of the Phase Four development, there are also some upland areas in this portion of the site, which can be developed as a passive open space with some amenities for the overall development. One of the questions that came up, I believe, and Vinnie can correct me, but the open space as part of those developments is expected to be open and available to the public with parking either located on the street for that access to that or with some dedicated parking spaces. As we, as I noted, the area here to the west or to the right side of the plan, 50 acres of conservation land has been deeded to the land trust that was required as part of the original subdivision plan. And the applicants in discussions with the land trust to try to answer the question about trail access and where that'll be located, it is our expectation to connect to trails that the land trust is planning. The the location of that is to be determined. They're working with some other abutting landowners in this area to provide to provide access to some of their other holdings. And so when we come back for preliminary, we'll be able to have a better plan of where the trail access will occur. We do know that abutting the site to the north, across the land of the Robies, that was part of the conveyances up in this portion of the site offsite as part of the acquisition of the right-of-way for the extension of the road, there has been some deeded access provided to the land trust across that property, running sort of along this property line and then to the west across to above the the city property at that location. And that transaction occurred earlier this spring. So there is a connection from the White Birch Lane that was constructed by the applicant across land of an abutter to access the conservation land to provide access to the school, and that was all part of the Phase One approvals. Before I turn it over, I thought it would be worth talking a little bit about some of the questions about density and the number of units. And some of this summarizes what the staff outlined in their in the memo before you. The table on the top addresses some of the discussion in your memo that the staff presented regarding the future land use plan, the comprehensive plan for this area. And in the, as was quoted in the memo, the base density that the comprehensive plan, future land use plan calls for in this area is a density of of four units per acre for sewer property. So based on our 130-acre property, that would result in about 524 units. The quote from the comprehensive plan calls for, also calls for eight units per acre of density for development transfer overlay district areas. Applying that to the 130 acres would be about 1,000 units. And as we've talked about in this, in the application, we're currently at about 511 units, so we're well within the range of what the comprehensive plan looks for for this area. And the staff did an additional evaluation of the transfer overlay districts theoretical maximum density for the project, assuming a 5,000 square feet per unit limit that the ordinance provides and a 65% land use utilization as outlined in the ordinance. And for this site, that would net out about 740 units. And so the 511 units, again, is well within and below what the the ordinance's theoretical density would be. A couple items of comparison for the 2024 concept and the 2025 concept that we have that we're here with today. As we talked about before, one of the main drivers to some of the reconfiguration of the buildings was the reduction of wetland impacts. As we developed the concept plan from 2024 and started looking at what that would mean, that was likely going to result in three-plus acres of wetland impacts on that site, and that didn't seem viable or desirable. And so as part of the relook at the project, again, the applicant went through, heard feedback from the community and the staff to try to focus the development on more studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and started looking at how that would best be accomplished through a mix of building types and sizes. And what that did was it resulted in a reduction in the number of buildings on the site from 13 to seven, so six fewer buildings on the site. As part of that reconfiguration, that drops our wetland impacts, or what we're expecting to be is to under 12 acres, I'm excusing, under two acres, so saving over an acre of impact compared to what the earlier concept may have resulted in. The final two lines there talk a little bit about the differences in single-family residential layout and what we've done in comparing the previous sketch plan with today's. You may recall from the 2024 plan, there were two additional multifamily buildings in these areas of the site, and there were single-family lots along this section of the southernmost road on the project. To avoid wetland impacts further, we've taken three of those lots away from this area and relocated them to the east and converted these areas from multifamily buildings with parking lots to to single-family lots, and then again consolidated those units into more efficient buildings focused on the east end of the site. So the last point, I think, was a question that maybe came up or was in the in the application is regarding the traffic permitting. So the project will, as we haven't envisioned, like as we said, we're going to be seeking approvals from DEP and the main DOT for all the phases, including the Phase One that's under construction today, gets wrapped into that analysis, the Phase One multifamily, the Phase Two and Phase Three residential phase, and the Phase Three multifamily phase. We'll be submitting a DOT traffic permit for all of that development and then reserving the final Phase Four multifamily for a future application, because, like you said, the the contract zone is very prescriptive about the number of units and buildings and phases that could be constructed and the timing of that. And those limitations push the ultimate development of that fourth phase out well past the DOT's window. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, Mr. Maeda's here if there's questions for the applicant that we can't answer for you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, that was a mouthful. Thank you. Members of the board? Please, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Chair. Dan, thank you for the presentation. Do you have, are you available to pull up the approved concept plan or the master plan from a year ago?
I do.
Yeah, just just for comparison.
Yep.
I know you've outlined the changes.
Does that clip at the top?
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Riley.
Do you want me to talk through this?
You might be able to clip that at the top.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, just quickly point out that I can see right now what you were mentioning. You removed some of the multifamily buildings.
Yeah, so it's a little clearer here than it was on the screen. My apologies for that. So this is the concept plan from 2024, the pink here being the first phase residential that's under construction. Like we talked about, base pavement is down for the road extension, the extension of the road here up to Robie Street, along with the water and the sewer in that section of the road, including all the sewer down to the pump station. The pump station is under construction, and the force main coming back up to discharge here is, excuse me, to the existing sewer manhole here is also constructed and built. The remaining road and utilities will be built next year in this section of the project, and there are several houses under construction now at this end. What's changed is you can see in the plan here, there were 13 multifamily buildings separated by the three phases. That's been reduced by six to a total of seven buildings. From a layout standpoint, the revision I was discussing were multifamily buildings that were proposed at this location have, those units have been consolidated into the other phases buildings, and three of the lots here have been located to that location here. This building and the development in that portion of the site has been removed just because of the wetland restrictions that are there, and this has been reconfigured from two buildings to one building. So that's sort of the comparison between that 2024 plan and what we have today.
That's very helpful. Thank you. So so with removing, you've you've added units. I understand you're going from taking out the three bedrooms, reducing the number of two bedrooms, going to a studio one-bedroom. So your your footprint of each.
in the original contract zone. I don't know what height buildings you were considering at the, when the contract zone went there.
Could you? Thank you.
That's a great question. We didn't have the contract zone when we had this drawing. Then we got the contract zone. It allowed us to go taller, so we increased the heights of some of those buildings and reduced the footprint to build smaller, more efficient units that will be hopefully a little more affordable for rental units than the bigger units were.
Sure. So how many, how many stories?
Most of them, I think, are fives and six, a couple of them are six-story.
Five, six stories.
Most of them are five, I believe. I think they may be marked on the, they may be marked on the drawings you have, I think.
Are they?
I don't think the heights are, the heights are, they're five and six-story buildings.
That's helpful information to include.
We'll make sure we get that in the.
Thanks.
preliminary application.
I'll have more, but go on.
Um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Anyone else? Mr. Frank, please.
Yes, Dan, nice artwork. You got two great drawings. With respect to the Phase One M, the apartments?
Yep.
In our notes, you mentioned, we mentioned a potential for an agreement with USM for student housing. Is that really on your radar?
Yeah, the applicant, so maybe it was mentioned in the, in the, in the packet. As with the applicant's moving through and figuring out that, that unit mix, they are going to be engaging a third party to do a market study to try and determine what the right size and mix of units are. There's been some discussion and certainly willingness to, to provide housing that would be, especially the smaller units would be suitable for students at USM. There's no formal agreement related to that, but that's certainly something that the Economic Development Director brought up in our staff meeting recently and was going to be trying to make the connection between the developer and the, and the school.
That, that's attractive from a standpoint of perhaps easing people's fears about impacts on the Gorm school system since college students are probably not going to be raising families in these apartments. Now, potentially, who will be the landlord of these rental units? The college or individuals?
The developer will be.
Okay. So we're not, we're not going to have fraternity houses?
No, like I said, the, there's no formal agreement with the school yet. The Economic Development Director offered, and the applicant has taken them up on it to try to get in communication with the housing folks at USM to see what kind of relationship might be, might be available for that. Right now, the school is not involved with the application, but certainly the applicant's open to coming to an arrangement to serve that need.
Thank you. That's encouraging from my standpoint. So on, yeah, on Friday, just as a little aside, I was subbing at Village School, and we had a lockdown for four hours because there was some police activity on Preble Street. I'm not saying it involved fraternity houses, but it's something to think about.
If I may piggyback on that, I, my, I did mention that to my wife about the comment of how it might be in discussion with, for student housing, and she said, well, wouldn't that be great if you had just bought into this subdivision, only find out you have student housing next door? Just take that for what it's worth.
I think for those of us that have been in town for about 30 years, we, we remember different frat houses in different situations, so.
28 Preble comes to mind.
Well, these will be one- and two-bedroom apartments, so you probably can't get quite the crowd.
No big letters on the side, I guess, no Greek letters, right? I'm sorry.
So just for the planning board's information, so Dan, can you pull up the phasing plan, the one that was approved? So that, yeah, that one right there. So for the planning board, we're trying to get confirmation from the town attorney. I couldn't reach him today, but, so as part of the negotiations for the contract zone, those multifamilies that are identified green were added at the request of the council. So it's not clear to me until I talk to the town attorney whether those can be removed without a contract zone amendment as part of the phase. Yeah, so, so on, as, see those green units, those multifamilies, those were added, they were single families at first, and then the council said, we want to see more multifamilies. So those two extra multifamilies were added at that intersection in green. And now the new plan doesn't show them. I don't know if they can just do that, the language of the contract zone, or because that submission was part of the contract zone, does that have to get amended if they're going to remove those multifamilies? I don't have the answer tonight, but it's something we're going to have to look into just to clarify.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I know, I know you spoke with the, with the applicant earlier today, and it's certainly something we can look at. I know we did look at the language of the contract zone, which didn't stipulate a specific number of buildings or units.
Yeah.
And we're hopeful that the, that the council or the city attorney will find that even without those buildings, we have provided the units they were looking for, and we're doing it in a way that we think reduces wetland impacts and sort of the overall development footprint. So, yeah, we understand that that conversation needs to continue.
If I may, thank you. So we're looking at a sketch plan review for Phase Two, Three, Four, or Two and Three.
Yep.
We may be assuming that the contract zone and everything is okay, but if it is not, we'll be back and having a meeting again. The council has to go to the council first, or our recommendation, and it goes back and forth. So we're going to be playing tennis here for.
So, so I think really, I mean, you can look at it, everything, the only thing that's, I guess, really open that for interpretation that we don't quite have nailed down is whether we can just make that change for those multifamily units to single families, or does it need a contract zone amendment by the council? Or the applicant can just put those back to multifamilies and doesn't need a contract zone amendment? So I think it's just clarification from the town attorney about, okay, because that plan was not recorded with the contract zone, it's not clear whether that governs with the contract zone, or is it just the language? Where it's very vague, and we're just going to get a legal interpretation to make sure we're on sound legal ground before we make a.
Any discussions this evening is based on what we're looking at this evening?
Correct. I think we can just say that we haven't nailed that down yet, and we're, that's still in discussion.
Sure. Okay. Colonel, please.
So one of the staff comments is additional review should be contemplated, completed to determine if additional units proposed are consistent with the contract zone agreement. That's one of the comments here. So is there anything else beside this issue with these two buildings, which in my mind don't, that doesn't violate anything in the contract zone by removing them, in my, in my mind? But are there other issues, though, that, like that, that are in this, that we need, or is this it?
And that's all I'm aware of. Again, so, again, so what's shown as multifamily is staying in multifamily, the height changed a little bit, the number of buildings, but we anticipated some change with that, right? So it's kind of the master plan. Is it shown multifamily in the master plan that was identified as a contract zone? It seems a layout all to what was submitted as part of the contract zone, except for that one area. So that's where it's a little vague. And typically, what happens is that plan will get put into the contract zone and then gets, gets added as a language. It didn't happen this time, so we're just going to just verify that.
So the staff comment here on page three.
Yeah.
Is this the issue that it's referring to, or are there other issues that need to be reviewed?
I think that's what it's, what it's referring to, is that, that issue. The other stuff, I mean, as the applicant has identified, it's all development transfers, so it's got to meet those requirements, and we'll figure that out as we go through the process, so.
It does say comparison.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Walsh?
So.
Colonel, I'm sorry. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just piggybacking on that piece. I had this down. It's, we need to understand, not only for this project, but future projects, when we have a master plan and we approve a master plan, how much change can we anticipate, should we, should we anticipate? Do we allow, when you get into the detail of the phasing? Now, I'm not asking a specific answer for that now, but it will be great to have good guidance on that for the future.
Yeah, I'm going to say it's going to get even more complicated when the council weighs in on the master plan.
Okay, because, you know, what I hear, you know, I can see someone easily in the public who doesn't understand this stuff, which is complicated, is bait and switch.
Yeah.
You know, you said you're going to do this, and now, wham-o, you're coming in with 101 more units? Think of the traffic impacts, which is real, which is real, because we're taking what could be two- and three-bedroom units, which imply a family, which is not as many cars as now we have studio units, one-bedroom units, typically one, one car per unit, that's greater traffic impacts. So if someone wants the all-bait-and-switch, I think they may have a damn good argument in this situation, and I think we need to be, I'm sure the, the town needs to be prepared to handle that and handle the repercussions of it.
So I, I think the planning board has more latitude when you're doing master plans just as part of a review of a large parcel, as long as it, the planning board finds that it meets the underlying standards, and whether it's two bedrooms or one, one bedrooms and the number of units change, I think there's more latitude. Where, again, where it gets complicated is the council weighed in on the master plan as part of a contract zone and then a contract zone agreement. There were master plans submitted as part of that. Now, new master plans are coming out that may be not in sync with that, so what does that mean? Was the master plan just part of formalizing the contract zone language and didn't have any, any validity as part of a master plan process? That's where I need legal opinion to help weigh in.
Yeah. And I, and I think that's great, because you do need to have some flexibility here, because what, you know, what the applicant has stated is they've done a more detailed, thorough market analysis, which says the, the types of units they're proposing today are more warranted and marketable and may be the best thing for the town of Gorm. So we need, you know, it's in the benefit of the town to have that flexibility, but I just think, you know, on a first glance appearance, this can look kind of bad, especially where traffic is such a big public concern on this project.
And, and just so you know, as we get through the permitting process, this could change a lot based on the traffic movement permit, DEP permitting and your own permitting, right? So they could be looking at this, but there could be changes that are going to be coming as part of a site plan approval. So master plan, again, like you said, is higher level, getting as much weed as you can, but as you get into the review, stormwater, traffic gets nailed down, that's going to be the ultimate play on how many units and how does this all work out?
Yeah, the only thing I want to add, because your, your comment prompted something I meant to make clear for everyone. When it does come to the traffic question, one thing that people often don't understand is that the traffic permitting that we apply for and the way the state looks at traffic generation from a multifamily development, it is based on units. So not based on bedrooms. The, the ITE and the traffic, the parking generation and counts are usually based on bedrooms, but to provide some assurance, however the, the city attorney lands on whether there's these, whether there's single-family buildings here or multifamily buildings here, the number of units is what will drive the trip generation and will drive the, the traffic permitting and the offsite mitigation and all of that. So hopefully that provides some comfort that a change in the number of units is accounted for when the traffic permitting goes forward. And it does also take into account anything that's been constructed by the applicant here in a 10-year period. So it's not, you know, the existing stuff under construction gets rolled into it, and whatever the final unit count is, based on the number of bedrooms and the number of units, that's what the traffic permitting will be driven, and that's what all the analysis impacts will be based on, so.
That's a good clarification, Dan.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then just, can I piggyback one more question on that, please? You know I always say one more. Is, what about school impact fees? How, what, how are they assessed? Is that, you know, is there a difference on a studio one-bedroom versus a two-to-three bedroom?
Absolutely. They're based on a bedroom, so I think a one-bedroom is, I got to remember now, I think it may be zero, but I'd have to go back and look. So a studio, I don't think there are any school impact fees, and then I'll have to look. We can't have that numbers, but there will be some if it's two bedrooms, and the single families get assessed just like any other single families, it will be the apartments.
Sure. Could we just build that into the, the discussion on, on the future?
Yeah, and, and just to add to that, too, the contract zone did have additional school impact fees, $1,000 per single family and $500 per multifamily, which didn't refer to a bedroom count, so presumably there'd be additional impact fees as a result of unit.
So would that have to go to the attorney for interpretation?
No, that's, that's part of the contract zone, so that's, that's.
On top of the existing.
Oh, per unit, okay.
Impact fees that Tom was talking about.
Yeah, whatever the zoning requires based on bedrooms plus what the contract zone requires.
Thank, thank you.
And I can say that, you know, we, we talked a little bit this afternoon after, after the discussion with Tom, and we'll be clear about what we're proposing when we come back to you, when we find out what the, what the council, the, the city attorney has to say. If the, if the interpretation is that, that can be changed because the units have been absorbed into, into fewer larger buildings, we'll come back with the plan that you see today. If the interpretation is that these need to be part of the project, then the applicant will determine what they want to do at that point, and they will either come back with a plan that shows the multifamilies there, or they'll pursue a revision to the contract zone if that's what's warranted. So the next time we see you, that'll be clear as to which direction it goes.
May I? Thank you. Maybe Mr. Norton, so I don't want you to feel ignored there. I'm looking on page six of nine, and it may or may not apply. I don't, I'm not trying to, uh, this is from the fire department, and this has got me confused. Item number nine, "It shall be the owner's responsibility to have a service winter maintained contract on the new hydrant as it will be private hydrants unless the town accepts the streets." Are we saying that a hydrant that is all I pull at Water District in front of somebody's house, that person is going to own that hydrant? Do you know, if you don't know, don't worry.
I don't know the specifics, Mr. Chair. That may also, or the fire chief may also have been thinking of hydrants located adjacent to the apartment buildings.
Okay.
But I don't know the specific answer.
The wording itself kind of caught me off guard, but I'm thinking, okay, we got several hundred units in here, everyone's going to own a fire hydrant? I mean, that's a little bit crazy. Going back to page three of nine, one of the questions for the entire board, "The applicants have stated that they are looking for feedback from the planning board on the increased unit count with potential adjustments made before the next admission." I'll echo Mr. Walsh. The simple math is that there's 120 additional units, and it took my breath away as I was going through and doing my homework. However, your explanation, knowing the wetlands and removing those items and the, the original, having the original drawing, added all kinds of ammunition for this, so I was very, very pleased to see that. I am more pleased now with the explanation and hearing you explain it, but I share this with everybody in the town. Traffic regardless, you could put one unit in this subdivision that's going to be traffic, so traffic's an issue. So hopefully we'll, I don't know, figure something out. That, that's all I have. Yes, please, Mr. Frank.
With respect to the hydrant, some towns, and I don't know if that's true of Gorm, it's the homeowner's responsibility, if there's a hydrant right in front of their home, it's their responsibility to clear the snow.
Okay.
So that the fire department can, can get at the darn thing.
Sure, sure. I, I don't know that in Gorm, what the policy is here.
In Gorm, it's, it's, all public hydrants are shoveled by the fire department in Gorm. So there are private hydrants on private property, some commercial developments have their own private hydrants, and they're responsible for shoveling their own hydrants, but any public hydrant or on a town road, it's, it's shoveled by the fire department.
Thank you. Sorry to keep you so late. Any, any other comments, questions? There's time to give us some input, where you're going to try and find out whether contract zone applies or doesn't apply. Hope you heard some good feedback.
I'll just say, I think the changes that they've, they've proposed through this makes sense.
Yeah.
I think they're, you know, the arguments you've presented are all logical, just the need to, is to make it simple so that the public kind of stands.
Sure.
Sure, sure.
In terms of traffic, it's my observation that a lot of students use electric scooters, so alleviates a lot of the parking problem. And those scooters are dangerous to drivers.
Oh, oh.
They're fast and they're silent.
Are we all set with Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, continued success. Members of the board, any other business to come before us? We have a workshop, I guess we'll coordinate with planning department and hopefully get Mr. Norton and Mr. Deering to attend. Mr. Norton and Mr. Deering to attend. Welcome as well, Mr. Borjaero, welcome as well.
We'll look to schedule that for 6:00 PM before the next planning board meeting. Does that sound good?
It works for me. Works for me. Any, any other business, folks?
No.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Any, any reason why we don't want to go home? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you all. Thank you, Planning Department, Mr. Norton. Thank you to Van Dyke. Thank you to members of the Planning Department, Planning Board for being here.